Let's get started.
Let's get started.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order on Thursday, September 13th at 7:00 PM for agenda approval, public comments, approval of the minutes 96, warrants, mail, town administrator report, authorized NIMC payroll webinars, budget report, Husick River cleanup, recreation committee hiking path, economic development, personnel policy first draft, municipal planning grant, report on gravel, audit resignation, auditor resignation, ballot article, safety plan development, and report on budgets in conference, the town administrator report. Under old business, we have appoint the lister, and then we had an open meeting law discussion. And under new business, we have renewed WWTF truck loan documents, discussed changing weekly meetings to each other week, analyticals of the newsletter, and transfer station computer replacement. What's your pleasure, guys?
Remove to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Open meeting law discussion, where did that come from?
Jen.
Me? Last week, it's in the minutes, in the minutes. I don't have anything.
I guess where I would be with that, if we're going to talk about open meeting laws, you can correct me if you wish to, Bob, but I would rather have you here in a seat if we were going to discuss that. Can you hear me?
I agree with that. It'll be, and that's fine, it might be a couple of weeks, and sorry, I'm supposed to renounce myself, this is Bob Jarvis. It might be a couple of weeks because it looks like I'm going to be dialing in again next week and possibly even the week after. Well, I guess the week after is a wastewater meeting.
Yes, you won't have to worry about that one. Okay, so I'm going to scratch that if the board's in agreement.
Yeah, and if it was me who put it forward, I don't, I don't know what it was in relation to, so.
It was a notation in my notes.
Okay. All right, so that's been removed from the agenda. Would that deletion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All of us said aye, Bob, just so you know, we begin to roll call, but all of us was in agreement. Would that say?
And I aye also, Bob Jarvis said aye.
Okay. Public comment. Yes?
I'd like to make a public comment.
And Anusha yourself, because Bob can hear you.
Okay, Rosemarie Palatier, and my comment is more to the audience that watches this than to the board. I wasn't here last week, and so I watched it on CAT TV, and CAT TV is wonderful about getting it out and available very quickly. And I wanted to comment on the public comments last week. Donna Lozan was here, and she came, and my sense was she was here even though it's inconvenient for her to be at evening meetings because she was concerned that her letter had not been addressed the previous meeting. And so she was here in person to see that it would be addressed. And I think the board did a very good job of addressing the issue of the difference between different kinds of petitions, ones that are legally binding and ones that are expressive opinions, that they want to inform the board. But the board didn't address at all the fact that they had not responded to the letter when she thought it would be addressed. And I didn't want any of the people who observe to think that you, that letters that are not presented in person are disregarded. So that's, that's basically what I wanted to, to say. I came and got a copy of the letter right after, you know, the day that I saw the presentation on CAT TV. And the reason, what happens is, I think, and Linda will confirm this, when letters are sent in, there's no censoring of them, they're all submitted into folders for the select board, and so that the select board can come in earlier in the evening and read them. Linda leaves at 5:00, so anything that arrives after 5:00 doesn't go into that week's meeting. And when I looked at the letter, the letter had come in at 5:28. So I, all I want to say is there's a reason why it wasn't addressed when she thought it would be, and that citizens should feel confident that when they write a letter to the board, it is presented to the board. All the letters are presented to the board, and the board reads all of those. So that's all I wanted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
That's correct. I just want to say hello to everybody who's watching, and congratulations to Haley.
All right. Moving on, approval of the minutes of 9618.
I need to have page four amended in two places. I did not abstain from the liquor license policy, I was, I recused myself for 8B, that needs to be corrected, and the motion for, about approving the temporary liquor licenses, that also, that wasn't unanimous, I also recused myself from that.
Okay, with those changes made to the minutes, I need a motion to approve.
Absolutely.
Second somewhere? Sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Bob, I assume you're saying, seeing as how you can't see them?
Actually, they're on the website.
Oh, good.
So, aye.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Okay, warrants. Let me see these things. Cost payable, ending 91418, in the amount of $16,119.19. The large item is the Bennington Sheriff, which was a little over 4,000, and East Engineering was a little over 4,000, and then of course, the IRS taking their share, almost three. Payroll, ending 9142018, in the amount of $8,220.85. Much pleasure, guys.
Remove to approve.
My second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Yes?
Bob abstained.
You abstained. Okay. I was speaking over you, Bob, so I didn't hear you. All right. Town administrator report.
We have mailed, don't we?
Yeah, mailed, you'll do first.
All right. You have a invitation from Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns for a fall planning forum at Lake Maury Resort in Fairleigh, and that is October, I just had it in my eyesight here and I lost it. Darn it, just had it. It's 17th of October, thanks, Brian, 17th of October. Received the sheriff's report, and the breakdown on the sheriff's report is 15 patrols, 13 traffic stops, one welfare check, one case of vandalism, a security check, one disabled vehicle, eight tickets, eight tickets were issued, there were three verbal warnings, one motor vehicle accident, one pursuit, one felony arrest, and three search warrants, for a total of 112.5 hours, a cost of $4,351.
Time period for that?
That is August 1st to August 30th. This coming Saturday, once again, household hazardous waste, and that is at Dorset School, 130 School Drive in Dorset. That's probably, that's the last notice on that. The next piece of mail is a gentleman that would like to have us consider purchasing his, his building and his property located on 7557 Route 7 in Powell. It was formerly the location Hillside House Furniture Store, and he wants us to consider that for a town hall.
Did he put the amount of square feet there?
Yeah. They put over 15,000 square feet.
$15,000.
Well. 15,000.
It's large.
And that's it for mail.
Move on to your report.
Okay, I'd like the board to authorize expenditure of $210 for Linda to attend payroll, payroll webinars. She has to get online and learn how to do the payroll, and that's for a price of $210.
Get a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
Budget report. Since taxes are coming in, we've, we brought in $235,992.40 of tax monies. Each line, each, the departments, each of the funds are under budget. We just received some monies back into the highway fund that was expended, and that was replenished by grant. So everyone is under budget, and quite comfortably so. So I'm keeping an eye on the budget, and everything that comes through, I check it for line items and make sure it's going to the right place. Husick cleanup, there's a gentleman that is head of a project to clean up the Husick River, and that's September 29th at 9:00 AM, runs till noon, and this is going to be on some our land, town land, and they're going to collect garbage, and they've worked out arrangements with the transfer station that all the Powell garbage will go to our transfer station, Tom Shuey. The question remains is, would you like me to get a waiver of liability for these folks from the attorney? Or do you feel comfortable, this as a volunteer project, letting them go ahead and just collect garbage?
Well, they've done it for several years now along the river in collection. This is a private group doing it, it's not the municipality requesting it, and it's not the municipality running it?
Nope.
Okay.
So do we, do we want to have a, is it planned to have a dump truck there or something, or a dumpster, what do they?
From, I really don't know. All I know is that they were going to pre, they're going to collect the garbage, they were going to place it someplace, and then a vehicle was coming to pick it up, perhaps pickup trucks.
Okay.
And Tom said he'd be happy to.
Yeah, he's done that in the past.
He's done that in the past.
They pile tires up along the road, they fill bags, pile it all along the road, and if there's something worse than that, then we have to.
When we've had cleanups before, we haven't had any kind of mishaps, waiver or anything like that.
No, the question, what you can ask our insurance company at the BLCT, what if any coverage we should have for when volunteer agencies and groups come in and do cleanups of the river or the sides of our roads?
Okay.
That way we'll know whether we should have something different than the liability we have now.
I will check on that.
And who's, who's running it, who's leading it?
It is Husick River Watershed Association, and apparently they have 30 years' experience.
Now, and I would assume that they also have a coverage yourself, you might want to ask them if they have coverage for their people?
I will do that, too.
Because lots of times, a group like that has their own personal coverage.
I think there's some involvement with our local group also.
Yes.
I think the Powell Proud Group is, their members are volunteering to work with, so I don't know that they're actually sponsoring.
Okay, no, 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 it was some involvement, I know that.
I don't know if they have insurance, if it would cover additional volunteers.
If they're going to get on less time, so they'll find out, that's the way to find out. Okay?
Okay, the next item is the recreation committee hiking path, and there's a proposal for a hiking path improvement that would go, I would say southwest side of the wastewater plant. It goes out down through the woods, up to the berm, and back again. And I walked it out with, with three folks from the state, one from fisheries, one from clean water, and the other for solid waste. And at the end of that, they verbally approved it, and we now have their comments that they do approve it, with some stipulations. They want to make sure that everybody stays in the middle of the berm, if they, if they don't want any part of the trail that's already there, they don't want any more brush, no trees over four inches, no branches, branches only up to your height can be taken off, and they want to stay on the inside of the berm at all times when they're going around it. This has been relayed to the recreation committee by me and the state, so that project will be moving forward.
I'd like to make a comment on that, because I've heard a few times from the people that run the wastewater treatment plant, their concern was the parking, that the way they've got it designed, they're trying to park down there, and what's happened in the past, people have left broken bottles and all kinds of other stuff. If it proves true that that's going to happen again, I think that the parking should all be over by the warehouse, and the people there to hike anyways, they can hike down to there, hike the berm, do what they're doing without actually entering into the wastewater parking area and stuff. And we might want to talk about the rec committee to see if we should just start there and see how many complaints we get because people can't park right next to their walkway.
I will take care of that.
We, we did have some conversation with Sue who was in the board, and what we did was we labeled the warehouse building now, Town of Powell, you know, maybe to encourage people that, you know, that it's a public area to park, you know, and with hopes that people would park there and not park alongside the driveway going.
Could we post some signage along the wastewater to direct people where to park?
I think there's been some discussion, and I think you have to talk to Ray on that, I think there's been some discussion on. I did talk to him about signage. Okay, so we'll elaborate on that with him.
Yeah, talk to Joe about the parking lot at the warehouse. The reason I say that is because there's a whole section that just has a bunch of stuff left there from.
And, you know, they've had, it's all been cleaned up since we talked about it last time, we put signs up and they cleaned up some brush, it's been.
So, okay, I'll.
It may need some more signage, but I believe we've, it's all been addressed.
Okay.
And there's, I also found a couple of different fishing spots, and I'm keeping them secret.
Okay. I'm sure some people already know.
Yeah. The next is economic development. Spent the past week working, what's his last name, Adam?
Tdorski.
Tdorski. And we've been putting together information from other state, local communities with economic development committees, and we've done a brainstorm, and got a list of things that we want to do, and I've just today sent him a item for the website, asking for volunteers, bring, send in their letters, resumes, and it described, it would describe what we're looking for, and that it's an appointed, officially appointed by the board. And that will be happening probably Monday, if I hear back from him, I'll get, start getting people in, and then, once we get people in, then we'll start to set a chair, vice chair, secretary, and we'll move on from there.
Yeah, the board would like to see who, who the candidates are.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We'll be reporting them, so.
Yes.
So at that time, then we can address any other concerns we might have.
Understood.
I sent out a.
Yeah, Bob, go, Bob?
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, Bob is, I'm just sorry about that, just a quick question on that, is Michael, if you could send out some, send out a, send out what you're going to, what you're going to be sending to Adam, just, I mean, the description of what you're looking for for the economic committee, et cetera, if I heard that correctly.
Well, I'm basically sending out a paragraph or a paragraph and a half, open it up for folks to apply. Everything else has been gathering of information and brainstorming, and putting things down on paper to present to whomever those new folks will be, and then we'll move on from there.
Right, understood, that if you could send that out to the.
Sure.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
We need to work out a process here.
Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, so I sent out a, an e-postcard to the list of folks that I have on, that I send my newsletter to, and I'd be happy to help Bob to write one that's similar for the town newsletter, or give you the verbiage, I can send you a copy of what I sent if you want to use that. So just putting that out there.
Okay, well, I would say send it to.
To send it to the town newsletter list.
Well, yeah, send it to the town newsletter for Bob, and then, because we have to review before Bob puts it up anyways. If you're sending it to him, send it to us, too, so we can see what it is.
Of course.
And that would be good, I mean, the town newsletter would match whatever's on the website, whatever we decide for the website.
Okay. Okay, any, no, okay, okay, I'm moving on, go with next thing.
The next is personnel policy. This is a first draft. This has taken quite a while to put together, it's been vetted through the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. I would ask that you all read it, ask questions, feel free to send me an email with those questions or suggestions. I already got one this morning, an update from the league regarding section 23, how we apply sick leave, so I'm going to enter that, that'll be a new item. So it is a very lengthy document, it's very comprehensive, and let's take our time, I suggest we take our time.
Okay, so this is a document that's being worked on?
Correct.
Okay.
But it's my first draft, so.
Yeah, Bob, I would assume you'd want to be at a meeting when we do actually discuss that as well? Correct?
Uh, yes, uh, thank, thank Nelson, yes, that's correct.
Okay, so at this point, just send stuff to the town administrator for anything, I know he sent it electronically so that we can get information and get working on it, but we'll have an open discussion when we get to the point where we actually act on it. Okay, thanks. Next?
Next is the municipal planning grants, due October 1st. I've completed all the narratives, we have all the work with costs and timetables, we're now going through and making, making sure that everything's corrected. We need one more signature on the resolution, and we should be on time with submitting a planning grant for roughly $10,000.
Okay, and it's for?
It is for to revise the town zoning and bylaws to match the new town plan that was, that was.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Moving on.
Gravel.
Or lack thereof.
Lack thereof. Mr. Stromeyer decided against signing a contract with us for, for gravel, and not going to sell it to us on any terms. Joel and I have been going out and looking around and talking to folks, and we hope to have some possibilities, suggestions for you, a recommendation for you quite soon.
Okay.
So, that's. We had a, our auditor, Rebecca resigned, we accept that with regret, and I've posted on the website the job description and soliciting someone to be the auditor, appointed auditor until March, when, if they wanted, they'd have to be elected.
I have a question, so we have three auditor positions, I'm, I'm sorry Rebecca has resigned because she was.
She did a good job.
Great job. The other one that's appointed, I don't know that she's been coming in, is she still an auditor?
She's still considered an auditor, I have not seen her personally in quite a while.
And I haven't seen that we've paid her, so I don't know if we have any auditors now. I just don't know.
Well, we, we seem to have not, no working auditor that's coming in and auditing our votes.
We do not.
We, we have an auditor that has not resigned.
Right.
So, so it's not that we don't have any, but the, what we don't have is a working auditor at this time.
We have except for.
We currently have two, two positions to.
Right. We have, it would be selected on the 20th for a select meeting.
Okay. Anyone out there that's hearing us, you can see what the job description is on our webpage, and we certainly need auditors.
And we provide training, correct?
Yep. We send people to the league's training all the time.
Ballot article is next, easy for me to say. Working with the attorney for a ballot, reads as follows, shall the voters of the Town of Powell approve the Board of Selectmen to support the continued effort by the Historical Society Committee to use the old schoolhouse and modular construction for a new town office to be located on land owned by the town located on Center Street for an amount not to exceed $750,000. If you folks approve that, I could have that in the clerk's hand in the morning, and that will appear on the ballot.
It has to be in her hands by tomorrow in order to make the November ballot?
First thing in the morning.
Okay. Be clear that this is, this ballot article is asking a yes or no question on whether to continue with this project. It is not a bond vote. What will happen if the town approves this process, the town will then start the work that's necessary to raise the funds to, to do that project. In that process, there will be a bond vote and a number of hearings in which people will be able to ask questions and also learn more about what the project entails. So be aware that before we're done, there'll be two votes. There'll be this vote, and if it's a yes, then there'll be a bond vote before the actual building could be built.
The pointed clarification, so the way it's worded now, a yes vote on this would say that this is the option you have to pursue when you're going with the bond vote.
Correct.
Correct?
That's the way we would, we would, we would look at it as the town approving this option, and we would do what we can to find the funding.
Does it, man, does it preclude, listen, talking about other options like the one that was raised earlier, can we still add that to the agenda for discussion, before this is voted on, or is it?
Well.
Does it take it off the table to? I just don't know how.
You can, you can discuss anything you want. What I'm going to explain is that this vote is a vote asking the town whether they wish to continue with this project as presented, and if they say yes, then we as a select board will support that group in finding the funding necessary to move forward with that project. Now, if other people wishes to, through the hearing processes, through the bond, bring up other options or discuss other options, that's their, their right to do that, but be aware then the bond vote is voted on, and if that's a yes, then we move forward.
Right.
But we're committed, with this ballot article, we're committed to this particular project being modular construction with.
We're committed to funding this project if it's a yes vote.
But this does not preclude.
I should, I should reword that, because we're not committed to funding it until the bond vote is done. We're committed to support this project because the people want us to support it.
Right.
That's what it is.
So we can still put on the agenda to discuss the letter from John Armstrong that came in today? Okay, that's what I wanted to know, it doesn't preclude us discussing other options?
Nothing precludes talking about other options, what we're trying to do is find other people to support this option.
Right.
That's what we were asked.
Yeah. Okay.
I think the people should ask.
You know, as a citizen, if, it, it's different to me if I'm voting on this and I believe it is the only option.
That's right.
Yeah. Or if I am voting on this knowing that there are other things in the pipeline. So I think, you know, the ballot article, it has been put forward, and that's fine, but I think it's incumbent on getting the information out if there are indeed other options. I mean, I, I don't think anybody's arguing that this facility is, it's not worth pouring money into, that we need something that is going to last us.
This, this does not prevent anyone coming forward, including board members if they wish, forward with other options and suggestions on what to do.
Okay, but I guess my question is, are these other options pie in the sky kind of things, or are they viable alternatives?
That'll be, that'll be up to the people to make that decision when they vote.
Except when we vote, we need to know, you know, I'm not going to go around and look at all the real estate in town and say, this is, this is what's available and we could possibly do this. I mean, we had a committee that looked at some things, I mean, we looked at the roost, that didn't work, I don't know if it was price, I don't know why that wasn't a viable option, because we didn't vote on it, that was pulled off the table before we voted. So I, I just think it's incumbent.
Those, those options were looked at before the vote, the last vote on the last.
I don't remember, I don't remember how we ruled it out, but it was ruled out.
My, my thing is, is that there's, there's options that were presented at the last time, and then there was a vote. I think there's going to be options again, and there'll be a vote, and it'll be left up to the people to, to decide what they want to do. And the bottom line, our job is, is to present what's presented to us, because we were petition, we were petitioned for a vote. We could have ran, we could have ran that vote the way it was, which would have said, if it came yes, that we would have had to basically get those expenses out of our budget somehow. And what they asked is if they could run it a different way to get that yes or no to see if the town is supporting it. I think that's what we're asking.
And I guess my question is, as a citizen, it's not my responsibility to come up with the solutions that meet the needs of the town. It's, it's up to me to, to support those, but it's not up to me as a citizen to vote for it. We have a citizens group who has brought forward a proposal, but I'm not sure that takes the responsibility off of your plate to, to.
Evaluate.
The needs of the town.
Yeah.
No, I need, to even come up with the solution.
Well, that's why I just asked if.
I agree, I agree, I agree with your statement.
That's what I was saying, it doesn't preclude us still continuing.
This could go on for years, we could go on for years with this process, I think.
Right, but we need, we need viable, in the near term, solutions.
Like we ju- Like we just received a letter.
Right.
That could be a viable thing, so I'm going to propose that it's put on the agenda to discuss next week.
Right.
We had some other proposals that weren't bought. They were bought up a long time ago.
Uh-huh.
But a lot has changed in time.
Right, and I don't know where any of that stands.
Proposals are a lot more viable now at this time, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
But the people got to know what these proposals are.
Right.
I agree with you 100%. Then we move on.
Yeah. So that when people are voting, they're voting with the full picture. So, as full a picture as you can at the time.
Well, I think that's what happened last time. Again, I'll go back to it. The roost was brought up, just like now the Hillside House is brought up. There's been other discussions about the building across the street. There's lots, lots of things that are brought up to us, and really, we've even had options with stick build, build one, maybe it's cheaper. And I think those are the types of discussion you're going to have when people ask the question about this building and what they're representing, they'll make a decision. That's what they did last time. They looked at it and said, no. They didn't, in the end, the no votes had it over the yes. I have no idea what will happen here, but I think our duty, only because we've told these people several times, our duty is to ask the public what they think.
But, but in the past, you brought forward projects from a committee that you established.
And this, this, this committee...
From a group of citizens, which is fine.
This group of citizens has brought forth a project.
Right, but what I'm saying is, that should not preclude your responsibility, if you had, you know, I don't know, but if you had something better in the wings, you should not sit on your hands.
I agree.
Absolutely.
Nobody's going to sit on their hands. I don't see that.
But what I see is a huge delay, because I think, I agree, I think we should be presenting. We should be talking about, I just recently had, was involved in a discussion. We already spent a fortune a couple of years ago on a proposal. There's different, there's different feelings as to why that was turned down. The feelings that I've got from people, it was too much money. That was the reason, that was the biggest reason why it was turned down. I think, and I've heard just recently, that we have all that information that we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars on. Why don't we take that information and look at that whole project and downsize it to our needs to something we can afford and see if it's even viable? I mean, I think we have someone, we have staff now that can do that.
And I have no trouble with the staff doing it. I have no staff talking, talking with Hillside House. What I'm saying is, we as a board have said that we would run this. Now, you're the ones that's got to make the motion and say yea or nay, and I leave it up to you, but that's what we have in front of us. And basically, that means in November, if we, if we say yes, this will run, and people will decide one way or the other. And if you don't want to do that, don't do that, and we can continue on saying, okay, now let's try this project. Let's go back to this project. Let's do that. And we can do it forever. So, it's, that's up to you guys.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is, it sounds like you're saying, we have to do this one vote, and then what the citizens say, go, goes. And I'm thinking, we should do that vote in November, but when the people vote in November, they should know there are these three, two, whatever, other viable options.
They're going to know that.
They are, okay, because it doesn't sound like that at this time.
We're going to have bond hearings. If this approved, we're going to have bond hearings. And at those hearings, we're going to say, do you wish to bond this project? And at the same time, somebody could stand up in the audience and say, hey, look at, you know, I don't think it was much more money than that, the last one. And basically, what you're looking at is why, if we're bonding this, we don't bond one that the engineers designed for us? Why, why are we doing this?
I think it's too late at that point. You've wasted a whole year.
Then you've had, then you're going against...
We're going to waste a year if we go back and ask people to come in and do something right now.
I think we have an obligation to provide information I think we lacked the last time. We didn't, we didn't present it well. I think maybe, maybe the committee thought they did, but I don't think the board did. I never felt we, we, you know, we presented it well. We didn't, there were times when, when we felt the architect should have come in here and explained and talked to him. We didn't. We didn't want to pay the $80 an hour or whatever. Finally, in the end, we did, but I think there was times that...
I was going to say, we paid the architect to come in. The bottom line, the bottom line, yeah, and this, you're getting into the end again with this one, and the same, same discussion's going to go on with this one, because some people are totally against this option. Somebody was totally against those options. I'm saying that we as a board, move forward, see what the public wants to do, and if it's as bad as you're saying out there, and you, this will be a no vote.
But...
If it isn't, it'll be a yes vote.
But if I'm hearing you right, you just said, if it's a yes vote, then when you go to do the bond, you're saying you can ignore that yes vote and move it to another project?
No, what I'm saying is, you've still got one more yes vote before you build it. You can't build it until you get the bond.
But that's what you build if there was a yes vote?
For the bond.
We're committed to going with that project if it passes.
We're committed to go and ask for the bond for that project, yes. But the bottom line is, there's three hearings on that. People are going to present what they want to present. They're going to say what they want to say, and then at that point, it'll either be a yes or no to go for the money. So, people have got a lot of options between now and the actual building phase of this thing.
Okay, so until that happens, does that mean everything else is on hold?
No.
No.
Okay, because that's what it sounds like I'm hearing from you.
No, that's not, no, no, no. That was what I clarified right from the beginning.
I'm not hearing it from you or Jason.
No, no. But that's what, and he acknowledged that.
No, people, people will continue doing what they wish to do to present at these bond hearings as maybe better options.
Okay. Okay, and I guess...
In their mind.
I'm saying, no, I'm, I'm saying, we elected you to solve the problems of this town, fairly or not fairly. But it sounds like you're saying, as a group, you're not doing anything. You don't have a committee doing anything on this if other citizens don't come forward with some other option for us.
We'll do what we don't. I'd like to say one thing.
Yeah.
Now, we have a town administrator.
Yep.
He has time to research some of this stuff.
Right, yeah.
He's already talking to a contractor.
Okay.
So, that contractor, a referral contractor, the builder, you know. We got that other proposal. I presume that he's going to research that stuff and get that back to us.
Okay, this is what I want to hear.
Not a long time further on.
Uh-huh.
Pretty soon, and give us some, some comparison here with price.
Right, okay.
Because I can't sit here and spend $300,000 more than I could did it for. I can't do that or whatever. That's my thoughts. Maybe I'm cheap or whatever. That's my thoughts. And I think that we are moving, there's been a lot of discussion, and it isn't me doing the discussion, but I've listened to people, and our administrator is, like I say, he's talked, he's talked to a builder already, and we had these other options, and we had that one that came in the mail today.
Okay.
Well, I want, I want Michael to get after that stuff and get us some numbers and see where we're at.
You should be aware that Michael has already gone through the roost. We, we're not sitting here doing nothing.
Okay, well, but as a citizen, we're not aware that there's anything else on the table.
Okay, no, we, we, there is other, I don't say there's a, there's not an option put together as solid as this one is.
Right, yes.
But there is other options being looked at, because they, we have to compare things.
Right.
We have to decide at some point, what's the best option.
And this could be the best one.
And I think at this point, everybody is seriously on board, knowing we got to do something.
Yeah, good.
We're not, before it was, well, we can, we can fix this, or we can prolong it, or we can do that. Well, now we more or less, I think, put that behind us. I think we're looking at, but let's do the option that's going to be here 100 years from now or whatever, and at the right price, the best price.
Right, yeah.
And it is the responsibility of citizens to talk to each other.
Yes.
Because we are trying...
And it's a responsibility of us to spend...
And it's, yeah, and we are trying every, everything we can to share. I mean, you know, we have this town newsletter. We have this website. We talk to people, but people have to talk to each other, because you can't force people to listen.
Okay, okay, we've all been, been talking here. Bob, do you have anything to add to this?
Um, you'll be happy to hear no.
Yes, thank you.
I guess the only thing I would say is that we need to be careful about when we're talking about the citizens, because they're not aligned either. There are citizens on both sides.
That's correct.
You know, there are citizens that believe that we need to do as little as possible. There are a lot of citizens who are all on board with the, with the current proposal, and there's others that don't think we ought to be doing anything. So, it's not, the citizens are not saying, are not telling us what we have to do. They're not aligned either, so I think we need to show some leadership, maybe lead them in a direction.
There you go. Okay, I'm going to, Rosemarie, you got anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to stop, stop the discussion and ask...
But you made me feel a lot better.
I hope I made a lot of people feel a lot better. Okay, so we have a proposed ballot article in front of us that needs to be to the town clerk tomorrow if we're going to put this under November ballot. What's your pleasure, guys? Get a motion to do that or not? Don't hear any. Bob, you, you, you into making a motion or not?
The question is, do we want to make a motion to go forward with this ballot article?
That's it.
Um, excuse me, so there's that pregnant pause again. I have a problem with ignoring a petition that large. There were 306 or however many, I'm sorry, it was more than that one, and it, it was 300 and something people who wanted this to at least go to a vote. And I'm not saying I'm for it or against it, but based on that, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we go forward with the ballot article.
I get a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
I got a second for the motion. Okay, any, I think we discussed it to death. I'll call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and I'll say aye, and it's so carried. Nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? All right, the three ayes have it. It'll go to a ballot article. And mainly, Bob, the reason I'm voting aye is the same as you.
I agree.
I think there was enough people that had an interest and wanted it done, let's do it.
Let the town tell us what to do.
They wanted the vote, so we should give them the vote.
Okay, moving on.
Safety plan. I began drafting a safety plan. I intend to meet with Frank Lamb and go over this with him. He is our safety person, and get his feedback and align our needs with that, so we have a town safety plan. That'll take some time. As, the next item is, as a personal rule of mine, if you folks pay for me to go to a conference, I think it's my duty to come back and tell you what I did or did not get back from that conference. September 11th, sponsored by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, we had a very good budget conference. It was a budget and borrowing workshop, and gave great advice on how to develop a budget, and had a set line item estimates. We had a great talk by the municipal bond bank. I was able to ask some questions directly related to us and got positive response from that. And had an attorney deliver a review of legal aspects of bonds and municipal finance, which was fascinating. And then a town administrator gave an interesting and informative discussion on how to market and deliver the budget, so it's, so it's passed appropriately. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do that, and I hope to be able to carry out some of the things I learned. And that's it for...
Well, let me report a little bit on that.
Sure.
The other thing was that our town administrator was able to meet a large number of other town administrators, found out about some meetings that go on between just town administrators at this end of the state and elsewhere, in which he'll be able to attend and learn how Vermont town administrators work with the state and elsewhere. So, I think it was very beneficial in the sense of building, working, working relations with other towns and other administrators, and I was glad to see that that came right off very quickly, and people were very glad to meet you, Michael. I think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. That's, that was your last?
That's my last. Now, you got me on their old business, too.
Okay, appointment of the lister.
Thank you again, Michael.
You're very welcome. We have one candidate, Mr. Jody Morris, Mrs. Jody Morrison, Mrs., I'm not sure. Trying to be a gentleman here.
Mrs. won't.
So, now that I've stuck my foot in my mouth, I'd like to recommend Jody Morrison to be voted on, to be appointed our temporary lister until the March vote.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Would you like, would you like to do auditing also?
It's not a conflict. You can do both.
Maybe we can do kind of a description like the British colonial navy.
Any further discussion? Bob, you heard the recommendation?
I did.
And I have a motion in a second, and I'll call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's unanimous by all. Welcome our board. Okay, now to new business. We knew WWTF truck loan documents.
This is the wastewater truck loan. Recommend that we sign the paperwork for a payment.
All board members have to sign this. What's your motion, guys?
We'll approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Place this, this sign on here. Unanimous. Why I'm doing this, what's the next?
Changing our weekly meetings.
Okay, discussion on changing our weekly meetings. Who wishes to start on that?
It's my proposal, so I, I recommend it now that we have Michael here, who is so on top of things and is helping our meetings go more smoothly and more rapidly. I think it makes the position of select board member more attractive, and it, I think we could do it at this point. We talked about it before. This summer, we had a lot of non-meetings, and we're still fine and on top of things, so let's, I make a motion that we go to every other week.
And I'll second that.
So, basically, that means two meetings a month.
I would suggest our first and third Mondays, I'm sorry, Thursdays.
First and third.
Thursdays.
And then we always are able to have a special meeting if we need to.
Right, if budget time comes around.
And we could, and we could always change back if it didn't work. Yes?
Mr. Chair, I wondered if you would consider when Bennington County Regional Planning Commission meets, that's Thursday night also, to, I'm unable to go to those because of this meeting, so if you, if you have...
I have the same problem.
Yeah. So, if you would decide, I think you might know off the top of your head when they meet.
I think it's the third.
I think so, too.
I think it's the third.
Okay, well, however...
So, how about the second and fourth?
Well, let's work that out. You can talk to the BRCRC and see if they have a standard date for when their meeting is. If it is at the third Thursday of every month, if you could do that, Michael, we'd be in good shape.
Got it.
And then at that point, we'll decide how we do our...
Very good.
Okay, but, okay, that emotion and a second to do, too. Okay, but, okay, I have a motion and a second to do, too. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Bob?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, moving on. Analytics of a newsletter. Somebody talk about that?
Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial to have a report of how many are signed up, what's the open rate, and what's the click rate of the newsletter.
Is that something that we could do and actually put in a newsletter each week, so everybody sees how it's being used?
Well, we can certainly do that. I don't think it will capture everything, because one of the things we weren't doing before that I'm doing now is printing off about 60 copies and delivering them, hard copies throughout the town. But I can tell you, on the August newsletter, there was an open rate of 60 percent. A click rate was lower, it was 19, almost 20 percent. And then, what else do I want to say about that?
Subscription.
But I mentioned that, there's also the ones that are delivered, hand-delivered, and you can't capture what, you know, what that is. We currently have 171 people signed up, so that's somewhat leveled off.
And you said your open rate is 50 percent?
60 percent.
Six, zero?
It says on August 1st, so it spikes right after you send it out, right? So it was 60.12 percent on the day it was sent out.
Great, thanks.
Okay, well, yeah, and I think that when you do the report and you talk about what that is, then if you just say that there were 60 paper copies delivered as well around town, that's fine, too, because it lets us know how many are out there. And you know, when you go out the next weekend, if you pick up newsletters that haven't been picked up, you know what that distribution would be, how well it's working. So I think that's good.
Well, I know that when we were talking about it before, I had a lot of people ask about the hard copies and even volunteers to deliver them. So I, we haven't really used volunteers to deliver them yet. Right now, they're going to both post offices, the town office, the library, and churches, and the village market in Winchester. We can add more to that if we want.
Well, I think that sounds like a good distribution. And again, what I would say is, you're putting them somewhere where you know where they are. When you go back to put in the other ones, you'll know if they've all been taken or not taken. So rather than add more for that spot because they're all gone or not. So I think that's a good way to go about it.
And that's exactly what I've been doing. So some places, I think the markets, they do disappear, whether or not they're thrown away or picked up, I'm not sure. But they do disappear, so I deliver a little bit more. And then some of the other places, you know, they're still sitting there, so I deliver a few less.
Yeah.
But it's hard to capture how many people pick them up, read them there, and put them back.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that sounds good. I think that helps us, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.